A 24-25 resolution for membership in the Minnesota State High School League, followed by amending a 23-24 budget and to adopt the new budget as a preliminary budget, using the previous budget as a preliminary 24-25 budget, followed by appointing the Iowa, the individual with authority, for signing off on Red Lake Schools reports, and that is usually the superintendent. So that's a routine thing we do every year in the summer. Then, under miscellaneous, the board will have the second of three readings to amend policy 503, student attendance, followed by the second of three readings to amend policy 501, school weapons. We will then adjourn meeting mid-week. And I'll point out that we do have, in addition, 7H, which is in addition to the consent agenda. Red Lake Warriors Football Team to travel out of state to join the Nike Kickoff Classic in Oregon. It's been in the works for a long time. We've just, since it's out-of-state travel, we need to approve it. All costs are being paid for by Nike for the whole team to go. Wonderful opportunity, educational and uplifting. Hey, any other additions? For the agenda, I mean... Motion to approve.
I'll second.
The further agenda for June 27th, 2024. Further discussion? Mary Nan, I'll say aye. Public comment and delegation, anybody? No, was expecting, but maybe not. Maybe a little later today. Okay, thank you. For that, I will guide you to page four in the board book, the May 2024 financial report for the end of month, a month ended May 31st, 2024, and a summary of all of the accounts. And we had a starting balance of $30,054,504.11. Our debits were roughly $4.5 million. Credits were $4.6 million, so a bit more than our debits. So we're ending our balance year or the month with $29,935,808. Just shy of $30 million. We did all spend a little bit, but some months we do that, other months we get ahead, so we still have a solid fund balance. So, everything is in order, as it always is when our business manager, Willie Larson, submits his business paperwork and his financial report. Consent agenda. As presented with the addition, motion.
A motion to approve, Chairman Barrett.
I'll start. Further discussion? Mary Nan, I'll say aye. I oppose both this and, I believe, action items, who builds and wears for the month of May 2024. Thank you, Chairman Barrett, and again, that's all in order. And when you look at 3.1 million and change, that's actually on the low side when it comes to our monthly bills. Usually they're somewhere between 4 and 6. I present that to you for approvals today. Is there a motion?
A motion to approve, Chairman Barrett.
A motion by Nicole. Second. Second by Tom. Approve of the bills and checks and layers as presented. Further discussion? Mary Nan, I'll say aye. I oppose the approved 2024-25 resolution for membership in the Minnesota State High School League. Thank you, Chairman Barrett. I would refer you to page 210 in your board book. It's basically a one-page resolution, resolved that as the governing board of Red Lake High School, we are going to participate in the High School League. Signing this resolution affirms that we have reviewed all required membership materials provided by the league, which defines the purpose and value of education-based activity and athletic programs, and defines each member's school's responsibilities. As part of that responsibility, we are required as a board, either as a group or individually, to watch a six-and-a-half-minute or so video. So I would like to show that first, and then we can entertain a motion to approve the resolution to join the High School League for another year. It's all very routine, but we share that here. Well, no sound. So, I present to you this resolution to participate next year in the High School League like we have the past, I don't know how many years, at this time.
It's informed us that our skiing club classes and the members aren't from the Red Lake School, it's from the other school. So then, when being that there's none of our students on there, and they have to go to meet and everything, does that mean we have to, or their school has to?
I mean, their school has to. We still control what goes on within our sports and our activities, so I don't think we have to do anything. If they want to do it, then they're responsible.
So do we still have a skiing team for us, for the Red Lake School District?
I believe we do. We have that group, that middle school group, and I guess we'll find out this coming year how many we have. But Nolan is in charge of it, and then whatever Nolan recommends, you as a board put your imprint on it, and I'll agree with it, and we do what we want to do.
But we didn't go with his recommendation last year. We went against it, and we voted to enter the High School League as a skiing team. You know, I had a profession with Hennessy, you know. We need to stay in the club.
Yep, and that, and that action that we do today, joining the High School League, doesn't have any bearing on that. But when we get into the fall, close to winter, we can visit that again. And if we don't have a team, then we should say we don't want to do it.
It was working well, I don't know.
Right, exactly, so.
But we're gonna have to get Rogers here, Walter, and what's going on.
Yep, and then Nolan can help to explain some things to us again. We gotta listen to him.
Rogers didn't compensate for all of it?
Yes, did.
Yep, so, but the first step is to make sure we are in the High School League so that we can participate in all the other sports too, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for sharing that, Tina.
Yeah. A motion. A motion by Tom. I'll start again. With that resolution for membership, Mr. Mike, please. Further discussion?
I think we just had it, huh?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll say aye.
Aye.
I oppose the amend 23-24 budget and adopt 23-24 budget and preliminary 24-25. Thank you, Chairman Barrett. For that, I would refer you to page 211, a one-page summary, very nice. What this is, is the revised 23-24 budget with a revenue budget overall with an expense budget of $52,433,049.58. So basically, this is a budget that has $3.5 million in revenues above and beyond the expenses, which is always good, that we end up in the black. $4 million of this is an early Impact Aid payment, so we're caught up now. This is actually from the previous year, but we're going to hold on to it and begin to spend it next year. And we receive about $16 million a year, so we're gonna get another $12 million for Impact Aid. So that will help us remain healthy as a budget. Part of this also is $800,000 in revenue and expenses for our new e-buses coming in, part of that grant. So that's kind of a wash, but just wanted you to know that that's part of the amount as well. And we will continue to be healthy as long as we continue to have more in the revenue budget, for the most part, over the course of the year. And a lot of that will depend upon, of course, our students. But as we continue to improve our climate and culture here in the district, we're gonna keep more students, maybe draw some students. And I'm optimistic that we will do that with the work that we're doing with PBIS and with our peer leadership program and other programs that we've got in place. So, this is the revised budget, the revised numbers for the 23-24 year that we're closing out at the end of June. But this motion is also to see this budget as our proposed budget for 24-25. So the resolution is to amend the budget for 23-24, and then to adopt this 23-24 amended budget as a preliminary budget for 24-25. And then as the dust settles and we get into the next year, Willie will give us some more specific numbers as we see grants coming in or other expenses going out. So I submit this to you for your approval today.
There's no line script.
Oh, Richard.
I'll second.
Second by Tina. Approve the budget and as presented. Further discussion?
The additional $3 million revenue, is there normally like a a different plan for those extra funds going into next school year? Or is it like really just allocated to normal expenses as usual?
For the Impact Aid additional? Yeah, it's usually, there are certain requirements. Of course, we have to spend it for mostly general fund items. Impact Aid is in place of or in lieu of tax dollars. So when we receive something like $16 million a year, and by the way, the federal government is actually looking at increasing it a little bit, which would be nice. But it's like tax dollars and generally goes into our, for the most part, our general fund. So it'll be used for continuing the operations we have in place. So nothing really new earmarked for that. Just, most districts have levies, tax dollars. Districts on Indian lands or on government properties or military bases don't have the tax base all the time, so we get it back. Good question. Thank you. A motion by aye. I oppose the amendment of PBIM. Yeah, lots of acronyms in there, but the EDIM report or EDIM portal, you will portal, called the Education Identity and Access Management Board Resolution. Page 275, I would refer you to that where that resolution is. And basically, it authorizes the Iowa, the individual with authority, with the district superintendent, to then authorize other individuals throughout the district to make reports to the state, like the curves, surgery reports, or the disciplinary reports. We have many, many reports. Early childhood assessment report, you name it. And every year, we have to, through board resolution, re-up, just like we did for the High School League, we have to reappoint superintendent to be able to have that authority to delegate other authorities to different people for reports. So, this resolution is a designation of me as that identified official with authority, the Iowa, for the 24-25 school year. Submit that to you for your approval. And then, before we all depart, we'll have to have the chairman sign a signature. Thank you. Very routine, what we do every year.
A motion, Chairman Barrett.
Aye. Second. By Nicole, in by Tom. Approve. EDIAM. Further discussion? Technically, that's a typo. It should be EDIAM. ED? Yeah, ED stands for education identity, but you better write that's how it's in. E D. Yep, just for the record. Yeah. Further discussion? Mary Nan, I'll say aye. I oppose. Okay, for that, we have the second of three readings for two policies. Policy 503, student attendance, which cleans up a lot of language. Then policy 501, school weapons, where weapons are defined a bit more clearly, and no action is required. Just, we're putting it out there again a second or three times for the public to be aware of it. And to clean up the language on both of them. I could point out that on the 501, the second of those policies, which begins on page 287 in board book, if you look at the bottom of the page, item D, under definitions, one of the things they do is really clear up and clarify what a definition of a dangerous weapon is. And I think that's something they're going to do almost every year, because we have new uses, unfortunately, for things that become dangerously weaponized. Any firearm, whether loaded or unloaded, or any device designed as a weapon capable of producing death or great bodily harm, any combustible or flammable liquid or other device, or instrumentality that in the manner it's used or intended to be used is calculated or likely to produce death or great bodily harm, or any fire that's used to produce death or great bodily harm. Flammable unit means any liquid having a flashpoint below 100 degrees Fahrenheit, having a vapor pressure not exceeding 40 pounds per square inch at 100 degrees Fahrenheit, but does not include intoxicating liquor. As used in this subdivision, combustible liquid is a liquid having a flashpoint at or above 100 degrees Fahrenheit. So they're just clarifying that. There probably was a school or an individual somewhere that had to deal with something like some combustible. So, the other change is on the fourth page in this policy. Under consequences, section five, item C, the appropriate official building principal, and they've just cleared that up. Instead of saying the appropriate school official, they're changing it to say the building principal. Every school has a principal, and that person is the one who should do it. As soon as practicable, refer to the criminal justice or juvenile delinquency system as appropriate. Anybody who brings a firearm to school. Somebody brings a firearm, we must let the authorities know. We usually do anyway, most schools do, but it's making it clearer. So, those are the more salient points, cleaning up the language using MSBA guidance. One more quick update. I want to share a note from Principal Shelley Fredrickson that as of today, we just brought in another school graduate. So, you know, we graduated 30 who wafted. I believe now it's, we had three more up till today, now we have a fourth. So students are still finishing. Sometimes it takes them the summer to do it. So that's good news. So congratulations to that student, all four of those new students, and to Shelley, Principal Shelley.
Yeah, they seem to give them a pass, and, you know, our expectations held our ground, and ultimately, the young man put in their extra work and graduated on by a hero. I know that put some extra effort from faculty and staff to work with them in the ground. That was cool.
Yeah. It's a good example of partnership between the student, parent, and the district. So, thank you. Yeah, it's great. I know Principal Shelley worked on that several meetings pretty hard. And, you know, when we talk about PBIS, positive behavioral interventions and supports. It's about everything in school that happens, whether it's academic or behavior. Here's an example of the academic piece. We were positively supporting by having high expectations at the same time. When you have those, people usually rise to those expectations. Congratulations to all those stakeholders.
Now, I want to share with the board, we have a elementary girls' basketball team, softball basketball team, and it's their first time. And today, we have 20, 23 girls registered, so that's enough for almost three teams. So we have to rotate, make sure everyone gets playing time, and, you know, we're taking attendance, you know, we have practice.
Yep, it's exciting.
I just want to share that, you know, and it's, it's, it's exciting, you know. Whenever these little girls perform that way, they're actually elite group of young ladies, so they're very competitive, and we won both of our games. We participated in the elementary night league, and it's their first time, and we're building that bridge. We participate in the Amity Night League, and it's their first time, and we're building that bridge. And so next year, we get to bring a boys' baseball team.
Oh.
Yeah, so. Get away with these youth and and a lot of our community students come from surrounding schools.
Right.
So we can draw them in here and and come enroll in our school.
Yep.
Share that.
You're a leader in the area. Yeah. So Mr. Rutledge, he's helping with that, right?
Yep, he's helping with the baseball.
Baseball.
Yes, so we're in the field and and we already um, got the O K from the board of Amity that we're going to play baseball next year.
Pitcher, pitcher.
Um, I got some and I'll send some on fair or some.
I mean, oh, pitcher.
Baseball pitchers.
Let me tell you about our pitchers. We have three girls that are um, pretty good at uh, fast pitch. And like I said, we won both of our games this past year. You're invited to come down, make your schedule. Um, you'll be amazed to see what our pitchers can do. So that um, our young coaches who are a long time here and they're college students or graduates are really working hard with our young girls. And they practice their skills every day and, you know, they gotta be at class, you know, at ten AM every day. So I just want to share, we have good things going on.
And we had a football team with Nolan and Chris Jordan went to Detroit Lakes. I met them there. For the Thielen Football Camp. That was awesome. And uh, part of the kids, it was fun watching them interact with the Thielen people and with Adam Thielen himself. Great.
Yeah, and there was a variety of students there. Yep, our Emma was there and she's quite a football player herself as well.
And I saw kids all the way down to like five years old.
Yeah.
Four or five, so that's great. Um, yeah. And then on Monday and Tuesday, I was with uh, two staff members, Kelsey, Kelsey Anis at the high school and Nate Anderson at the high school. And we went to uh, Rapid City, South Dakota. I mentioned it in my report, and worked with other schools that serve indigenous students. So I met a lot of native people who work in schools and worked on things that we can do better to support and promote peer leadership and peer leadership class I'm hoping to have. And I was honored to meet Peggy Phelps. Phelps is a Lakota woman who uh, has worked in her school district for twenty five years, working with kids. She was married at one point to um, Russell Means from the American Indian Movement, very influential in South Dakota. And she shared some really good ideas with us about working with kids, very articulate. And I learned from her. And then I asked her if she knew anybody from up here. She said, no, I don't. But uh, send my greetings. She greets us here. I was thinking maybe she might have crossed paths with them and speak to you or members of the council, but she said she didn't. So it's been a busy week. What's going on?
Anyone else?
Yeah, there isn't. And next month meetings, third Wednesday?
Should be on time again, so it'll be pretty, like only about three weeks, right? Yeah.
Schedule.
Act is good. Yeah.
That's on the speed. Won't be? Something's running on there. At the nineteen?
Our next meeting would be seven, what is it?
Seventeenth on Wednesday?
Yeah, it's a Wednesday anyway, because I keep getting letters from.
Yeah, we usually collaborate with the R L P D and the fire department to do like a activity with the.
Yep.
The club, so there's a good chance.
Yeah, and I thought I thought there was something over there about they're reviewing or they're coming up there for a date.
Oh, safety assessment, yeah.
I mean, it says that I have to be there sometime or something, so I didn't know.
That'll be the morning evaluation.
The morning and the fall, okay, so it should be good.
Takes like thirty minutes, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to hear this, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, if anything else comes up, we can always let you know if we do have to change it, but hopefully we can keep it.
No, we should be fine.
All right.
Okay, if there's nothing else, um, I'll move to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. I can buy Ben on for adjourn. I'll load your favorite day up.
Hi.
I hold. Oh, and.
Jerry, you have the document for Chairman Barrett to sign?
Guess what? When we go on to Nike Town, we get to go to the Seattle Seahawks.
Wow.
And so we'll spend the whole day with them, we'll practice with them. Um, we're gonna be in their facility all that that second day, and then we'll catch the red eye flight back.
Can I cheer for your missile? Jump ship on us, though.
No, we're, we're Vikings fans. Because more than likely, we'll take the Warriors back to the Vikings city this time. So.
Something was going out in the boardroom.
For those from uh, previous board. Yeah, no, you shouldn't. Yeah, we'll have records, so we can recycle that.
I just leave them.
Yeah.
Because it just looks like.
What's going on?
We just need one signature.
Yeah, it looks like it, although, yeah, all right, um.
Just a quick contract.
I wonder if we should write print, and I can, I can expect mine too. I don't think you need mine, but I'll do it anyway, just in case. And then we can get, yeah, we can get, like, yeah. Yeah.
That's what these are, huh?
Yep.
And you guys must already.
What else do I want? I don't know who's getting bagged. The Warriors are gonna get from Nike. Super excited.
These are, yep, we already picked one, and that was uh, the up north group, so.
And I got parents talking about trying to bring their kids here.
Well, it's these guys, pretty north, yeah.
That would be so good.
You can go ahead and throw those.
Excited.
There was a thing in, that you set this on Dustin.
Oh, yep.
Do it around.
Every year, we just, all that's prepared was the.